...board you'll meet momentarily, and we have an agenda full of items to talk about and vote on tonight, but we'll begin. Madam Clerk, if you will please call the roll.
Council President Lyda.
Here.
Council Pro Temposi.
Here.
Councilmember Sweeney.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Middlebrooks.
Here.
Councilmember McClintock.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. If everyone would please rise and join us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Sweeney.
If you'll bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, you have brought each of us here to care for this city, to work together and to do our best to shine your light on Hoover. May all that we do be done in love. May we be surrounded in peace. May we make a difference, not only in Hoover but in the world. May we have compassion and help one another, and thank you for all that you have done for us and all that you continue to do, in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Before we move to the announcements section, I know there may be some guests and residents here who are interested in the Everly Development PUD and the Blackridge Amendment. Those items, at the request of the applicant, have been continued until the May 3 meeting, so if you're here for that, I apologize for the last-minute change, but you'll notice they're not on the agenda. They have been continued to May 3. Notices will be sent out, right, Ms. Dickerson?
They will not.
They will not? Okay. Notices will not be sent out, so this should serve as notice that those items will be heard on May 3, and you're welcome, of course, to come back then, or you're welcome to stay for the remainder of the program. Either way. Now, we'll move to announcements and reports. Ms. Betty Daigle, I'd like to call on you, please, to share with us about your committee, please.
Thank you, all of you, for having the Hoover Beautification Board back again to celebrate some of our wonderful Hoover students. As you know, the Beautification Board each year runs a Litter Poster Contest in the elementary schools, and so tonight, I'm very proud to present the winners of Litter is Done in 2021. I think you'll be happy to know that. So several of our Hoover elementary schools held campus contests for 4th and 5th grade students, and this year, we tried something a little different. We added a category for 3rd grade students, and we're hoping that this can be part of our plan moving forward. The campuses select their winners and send them to the board, and then the Beautification Board spends a morning judging the posters to come up with the winners that we send to the state, and then they'll be judged in Montgomery at the end of this week. So if anybody's going down there, let me know. So tonight, we're proud to announce our winners, but before we do that, I want to take a moment to recognize some of the teachers that always support us in this effort. This has been a tough year, as everyone knows, and I just feel like they need a special recognition. Megan Coffey from Trace Crossings, Ashley Myers and Danny Berryhill, as well as Dr. White from Gwen, Sean Argo and Principal Amy Weems from Bluff Park. These ladies always support our efforts and encourage their students, and in this year, I think that was almost going above and beyond, so we really want to thank them. So now to the fun part. Our first award winner is going to be our 3rd grader, and she is going to come up. Come on, Ally. Ally Renta. She is from Bluff Park Elementary, and Ally's poster says, "Give a Hoot, Don't Pollute." If you want to, Mayor. Our next award is a 3rd place winner in the 5th grade category, and she is Skylar Gamaro.
Gamaro.
Good. Skylar Gamaro from Bluff Park Elementary, and Skylar is new to Hoover here. Want everybody to see this beautiful face. And then, in an unusual occurrence this year, we actually had a tie for 1st place. We had two posters that got the same number of votes, and there was heated discussion, and we just felt like we just had two winners, so go with it. So these were both 5th grade posters. We have Lily Mathis from Bluff Park Elementary. Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, and congratulations to our winners. Yes, I would love to.
Thank you, Council, and congratulations to our winners. Thank you, Ms. Daigle. Always a pleasure having you and your committee members here, and special guests as well. Also want to make some guest recognitions tonight. We have former Councilman Joe Reeves. Joe, welcome back. Always a pleasure. We have Hoover School Board President Deanna Baumann here. Deanna, welcome. School Board Vice President Amy Tossney is with us. Amy, glad to have you. And School Board Member Craig Kelly. Pleasure to have you all here. Thank you for being with us tonight. We'll now move to our consent agenda, and if it pleases the body, I would like to ask that we move item #12 to the regular agenda. For those in attendance, the consent agenda is presented as items that we anticipate for there to be no discussion or no opposition to. However, I would ask if there is an item you see on the consent agenda you would like to speak toward, by all means, make yourself known, and we would be glad to move that to the regular agenda. Are there any items that need to be moved before we have those read? Any items from the members that would like to be removed besides #12? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Corley.
Item #6 is the approval of minutes from the April 1, 2021 work session and the April 5, 2021 meeting. Item #7 is Resolution 643921, which approves a 020 restaurant retail liquor license for Electric BP LLC doing business as The Electric located at 2146 Tyler Road, Suite 212 and 214 Hoover, Alabama. Item #8, Resolution 644021, authorizes Mayor Brokado to enter into an agreement with Class Tran for the provision of certain public transportation services. Resolution 644221 amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2021, as set forth on Exhibit A attached to the resolution. Resolution 644321 authorizes the creation of four part-time bus driver positions for events, and Resolution 644421 declares a public purpose and authorizes removal of storm debris from properties impacted by the devastating storms which occurred on March 25, 2021 in the city of Hoover.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of all items on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The resolutions carry. We'll now move to item #12, Resolution 6445-21. Mr. Corley.
This resolution appoints a public defender for the city of Hoover, Alabama.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and talk a little bit first. Mr. President, as we talked about this Thursday, we had a vacancy in our court in the public defender office, and so we embarked in the effort to maintain that depth in the court. We took some applications and started a search to find a replacement for that public defender. We had several applicants and several people who applied, but there was one who really stood out and head and shoulders above the rest. And I'm going to break with tradition a little bit, although I'm the liaison of the court, and because this was Councilman Murphy's excellent referral, I'm going to let him introduce the candidate and make the motion to appoint.
Thank you so much, Councilman Shaw, and also President Lyda, for your detailed diligence in this entire process. I do want to say that, you know, when we look back at our life and the sacrifices our folks have given for us to be in situations that we are in right now, it is greatly important to make you really think about, you know, the sacrifice they have done in being the first educator, being the first one to graduate from college, or get a master's degree or become an engineer. So to sit back and think about what they have done for us and our forefathers and foremothers is great. I want to, this person that was interviewed, Ms. Waquisha Hazard, graduate of Georgia Southern in Political Science, minor in English, attended a HBCU, Miles Law School, obtained her law degree there, became a licensed attorney clerk with Judge Fancher, a longtime Hoover resident, specialties in criminal law, domestic relations, personal injuries. And when I asked her why did she get into law, her response was she remembered being a young girl and noticed some of her friends and family and folks she knew didn't have the opportunity for good legal counsel. One particular event occurred with her grandmother not having access to have the funds necessary to be able to afford to do certain things, and that gave her inspiration. When I talk about inspiration that drives her, she talks about her mother and father. Her mother's a retired schoolteacher, father a superintendent, long shoreman in Georgia, and once she graduated, they were the ones that paid for her law practice, and to have that support is critical. So without further ado, I would love to make a motion to appoint not only our public defender, but our first African-American and female public defender for the city of Hoover, Ms. Waquisha Hazard.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments from members of the body?
And just to confirm, this appointment is via Resolution 644521.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, discussion from the members of the body? Any questions or discussions from members of the public? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the resolution passes. Mr. Councilman Murphy.
Ms. Hazard, do you mind coming up and speaking and introducing who you have in attendance, if you don't mind?
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here. As Councilman Murphy stated, my name is Waquisha Hazard, and I would like to thank each and every one of you for allowing me to serve as the Assistant Public Defender in the city of Hoover. I do not take this lightly. I love helping people, and I have a passion to serve, so I thank you all for allowing me this opportunity. I have with me today some of my family, my father, William Hazard, my mother, Mary Ann Hazard, and my sister, Dominique Hazard.
Welcome to Hoover.
Thank you so much, and I have a lot of other people, family and friends, that are supporting me, that are watching, you know, the live stream. They couldn't get here in time enough, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Hazard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Murphy. Ms. Hazard, would you entertain a photo with us, please, ma'am? And you're welcome to bring your family up if you would like. Mayor, would you join us, please? Ms. Puque, would you come, please? Come on down. Mr. Corley.
This resolution appoints a member to the Hoover Board of Education.
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution 644-21 in appointing Mr. Alan Paquette to the Hoover Board of Education.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution 6441-21. Any comments or questions from members of the council?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Sir.
I want to thank everyone who applied. I think we had many qualified candidates. I think that speaks very highly of our community, and I'm very appreciative of that. However, as my position is with the Hoover City Schools, my day job, I'm going to abstain from all further discussion and vote.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, if I can too, I'll be abstaining from voting, not for any conflict but other reasons.
Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments from the body? Any questions or comments from members of the public?
I had one, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank Steve for this, for this process, and for everything he did. We did have a lot of candidates, and also, we had a lot of public feedback, a lot of people emailing, texting, calling, and giving, you know, their opinion, who they liked, who they supported. Some people, maybe they said they were wary of and some things of that, so a lot of public feedback. Honestly, when you get in a situation where there may be some things that are on people's minds, they do that, but I liked the process. I liked what you did. I liked the rounds, the different rounds of questions, because I felt like I got to know the candidates better as we went through the process, and a good job.
Thank you very much. And I'll also say this, that when you have some great applicants and candidates, in the end, unfortunately, there can only be one. Mr. Posey here applied in 2015. I applied in 2011. We did not get it, and we know how that feels, but we ask that everybody that wants to stay involved in the community and in governance persevere and keep doing so.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the resolution passes. Mr. Paquette, would you please stand and be recognized? Welcome to the Hoover Board of Education. I see Mr. Paquette is joined by his wife, Janet. Janet, welcome. And his child or children back there?
Both.
Both, good. Well, welcome to them as well. Glad to have you here. Mr. Paquette, would you like to say a word or two?
Good evening, everyone. As you know, my name's Alan Paquette, and first of all, I want to thank you all for putting your trust in me. I will work hard not to disappoint you and to represent the city and the schools in the very best way that I can. I, too, have applied in the past and did not get it, so I understand the thrill of victory and the agony of defeat, so to speak, so. But I'm looking forward to getting started and working with the great board that you already have in the administration, and once again, thank you all for putting your trust in me, and thank you for my family being here tonight. This is a great honor, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Would you entertain a photo with us, too, please, sir?
Sure.
And Janet, if you're going to, children would come down, please, to join us? And Craig, Amy, and Deanna, if y'all come down, too? Mr. Corley.
This ordinance modifies the city's emergency transport services regulations as shown in the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of the ordinance, #21-2516.
Second. We have a motion and a second for adoption of the ordinance. Any comments or questions from members of the council? Any comments or questions from members of the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll and allow the members to vote.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. McClintock?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye. Seven ayes, zero nays, and ordinance is adopted. Item #15, Resolution 642521. Mr. Corley.
This resolution grants conditional use approval for a drive-up or drive-through restaurant on the property located at 1727 Montgomery Highway, Hoover, Alabama, for Whataburger Restaurants LLC.
Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution #6425-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the resolution. We will now open the floor for a public hearing for the conditional use, and I would ask any members of the body who have questions or comments about this to participate at this time. Hearing none. Any members of the public who would like to participate and speak for or against the conditional use as part of the public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second for approval of the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the resolution passes. Item #16, Resolution 6423-21. Mr. Corley.
This resolution grants conditional use approval for a convenience store and gas station on the property located at 3641 Lorna Road, Hoover, Alabama.
Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution #6423-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the resolution. We will now open the floor for a public hearing to consider the conditional use. Any members of the body who wish to speak on behalf of this conditional use at the hearing? Any members of the public who would like to speak on behalf for or against the conditional Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second for approval of the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item #17, ordinance #21-2512. Mr. Corley.
Understand, we may have a motion to continue this.
Yeah, I was going to go ahead and move to continue all three, since they're all related, so would it be in the interest of time?
I think so, yes. If you'd make a motion for all numbers, we'll just do all three at one time. Is that okay, Mr. Corley?
Yes, sir.
Does he need to read them first?
Do you need to read them?
No, just a motion to continue, ordinance #21-2512, also to continue Resolution 642421 and ordinance #21-2513.
Mr. President, I move to continue ordinance #21-25112, Resolution 6424-21, ordinance #21-2513.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Shaw, that is to continue to May 3 meeting.
Yes, sir.
Correct. We have a motion and a second for continuing those three items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item #20, ordinance #21-2514. Mr. Corley.
This ordinance rezones the properties listed in the ordinance from Hoover R1 Single Family District and Hoover E2 Estate District to, pardon me, to Hoover R-LSF.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance #21-2514.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now open the floor for a public hearing. Since this is a rezoning case, it requires a public hearing, I would ask if there's any members of the body who would like to speak for or against changing the ordinance. Hearing none. Any members of the public who are here would like to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second for adoption of the ordinance. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. McClintock?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye. With seven ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. Item #21, ordinance #21-2515. Mr. Corley.
This ordinance amends the zoning ordinance of the city of Hoover to add the term "research and development facilities" and to provide for such use within certain zoning districts of the city.
Mr. President, I move for approval of ordinance #21-2515.
Second.
If you like public hearings, we've got a nice bunch of them on the agenda tonight, so we will open the final public hearing of the evening and ask if there's any members of the body who would like to speak at this public hearing. Hearing none. Any members of the public who would like to speak at the public hearing for or against the ordinance? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. McClintock?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye. Seven ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. Item #22 is a first reading with a potential vote on May 3. No action to be taken at this meeting. Ordinance #21-2517. Mr. Corley.
This ordinance amends Chapter 13, Section 13-4 of the Municipal Code of the City of Hoover to provide for special events within the city of Hoover.
Thank you, sir. Again, we will have a second reading and vote on May 3. That brings us to the end of our agenda. I'd like to ask if any members of the body who would like to make any comments tonight?
Mr. President, I would. Mr. Harden, I see you in the audience out there, and I went the other night to get Chinese, and that store really is coming along, and, you know, and Ben was able to get his license tonight, so everything's coming together up there very well. Very proud of it, ready for you guys to get open and go up there and shop.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Anyone else? Now open it to the audience. Any members of the public who would like to make any comments tonight? Yes, sir. Come on down. If you'll give us your name and address, please.
Hello, gentlemen, ma'am, audience. I'm Charles Hudson. I'm here along with Carol Ann Sullivan and Patty Lansdale. I live at 5513 Lake Sedge Drive, and that's Graystone Farms, which you might have seen us in the news here lately. I didn't come to throw rocks, I came to throw flowers. I think they made a poor choice in getting me, because I can't find the words to express how grateful we are to everything that the city of Hoover has done, you guys have done. It just went far beyond. I can't say... It just went far beyond, I can't say expectations, because we didn't have any idea what to expect. I mean, it far exceeded our hopes. I mean, from the police department's response, from the fire departments, from Public Works. You know, I told someone the other day, if I thought, gee, if I only lived in the Hamptons, or if I lived in Mountain Brook, it'd been so much better. No, no one could have done more, asked more than you guys did, and we, you know, we appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Well, we can assure you that that message will get passed on to the many, many employees who have made a difference, and we thank you for your patience, and we're not going anywhere until it's done, okay? So...
We had a community workday Saturday, we filled the streets up again.
Okay, we're good. Well, we know that you've got a long way to go, but we appreciate so much you being here to say that. Very kind of you. Anyone else like to speak tonight? All right. Thank you all for your attendance. We're adjourned.